July 11th, 2024, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7 o'clock and we're meeting at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We have Lake Cam recording. Is anyone else recording? Hearing, none. Our first item on the agenda is a public hearing. Modification of a site plan review, 5 Harding Street. Upon the application for modification to a site plan review previously approved, to change from one large building to six smaller buildings, site layout and appurtenances changed to accommodate new layout. Possible vote. And we will read the notice of public hearing. The Lakeville Planning Board pursuant to the Town of Lakeville Code bylaws, Chapter 270, Section 270-6.7, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 11th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. At the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Bedford Street. The purpose of the public hearing will be to receive information and public comment on the following site plan review application. 5 Harding Street, the applicant Lighthouse Point Industrial LLC, seeks site plan review and approval for a minor plan change to the plan previously approved by the Planning Board on October 24th, 2015, for 5 Harding Street. The change is from one large building to six smaller buildings and associated site layout and appurten-- sorry about that. Change to accommodate the new layout. I'm having trouble with that word. Do I have a motion to open this hearing?
A motion to open the public hearing for 5 Harding Street?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. If you would like to come up. And I will say that we did just receive, Kathy handed them out and she did email them to us. I just saw them now for the first time, right now. But it looks like we've got response letters to Chief O'Brien, to the Board of Health and Conservation and also Natural Heritage. All those letters that we've been copying, I'm assuming. You've sent those directly?
But I just received the comment letters early this afternoon. Kathy was good enough, I know there was a holiday. So, you know, we got them, you know, mid-afternoon or early afternoon. So we responded. So I'm sorry for being, you know, kind of just coming in late or we just literally got them.
Oh, no worries. I mean, this is just the start, the opening of the public hearing.
Understood.
So we'll have plenty of time to go over all these things.
Right, yeah. So there should be two letters for the Board of Health, actually. I sent a separate one in for the well and then the other one to address that, the fire department. And then the Conservation Commission had some comments about the other agencies that would be involved. And we've been in contact with the other agencies and done the inspections. So we're in compliance with everything there, so.
Okay. Alright, well, it is a lengthy application, but go ahead with your presentation.
Great, thank you. Again, John Kelly, applicant. So the site here, 5 Harding Street, previously was approved. We purchased the property. The previous approval had an L-shaped building. It was basically going to be contractor base. So I know at the hearing that we had before, just introduction to the project, you know, there was some talk about, you know, who's going to occupy this? Is this multi-tenant and things like that? The previous approved plan was for a contractor base. Could be anywhere from 10 to 17 different tenants in there. And that's not our intent. Our intent is to operate this for our business. So all these buildings are for us. The yellow here showing kind of the truck turning radiuses and stuff like that. The buildings here, this is going to be our central dispatch building, which would be basically a small office, restrooms, locker room, mechanical room, things like that. So there's restrooms located right in here. We also located this building here with a restroom. It was a question about why some of the buildings don't have restrooms. Basically, it's garage buildings. So the trucks would enter in here and leave at the beginning of the day and go off and do their, you know, routes. They could be anywhere, currently they have a job in New Hampshire. So the trucks are running all the way up to New Hampshire and stuff like that. But basically, you know, off property, come back the other day, park. We want to take care of our equipment and spend a lot of money on those trucks. So we want to have them inside and garaged and basically, you know, that's why there's no other bathrooms. This would be really our, you know, time clock, check-in, all that stuff right there. But just the configurations here shown. You know, the fire department had a question about the culvert. We've provided the information, cut sheet on the RCP culvert, so that would accommodate any of the largest fire trucks. You know, our largest truck is 95 feet, which is a lowboy, which, you know, tractor-trailers typically 80 foot or less, but we have tri-axle dump trucks, things like that as well. So that's why the L-shaped building didn't work. We didn't have enough turning radius. So we've actually accommodated this and built this for specific truck needs and turning radiuses. And then for our mechanics, we have to do inspections with the, you know, Department of Transportation. We have to do all that work and some service work and stuff like that onsite. So that'd be part of the garage base as well.
Just one quick question.
Yes.
You started interrupting.
Yep.
So for the lowboys, you've got several tons on that for, you know, the equipment.
Yes.
Is that pretty much the extent in terms of what would be coming onto the property with the amount of weight on those trucks?
I mean, that's going to be, that's going to be the heaviest.
Okay.
The lowboy is going to be by far the heaviest. I mean, that's 100,000 pound, you know, it could be up to 100,000 pounds. So that's, and that's why we built, we've gone in the Class 5. So we've, we're over-designing on making sure that they, you know, not taking any chances, put it that way.
Perfect.
And again, I mean, you know, so the contemplation there was, again, when the previous plan, you know, you could have had, you know, again, 10 to 17 different tenants in here.
Yeah.
You know, we want this to be our checkpoint. So we want to be able to control, so nobody's going to come in here. There's not going to be any visitors, really. I mean, this is, this is really, our office is in Rainham. That's where the majority of our accounting staff, office staff, marketing, things like that would be here. And again, this would be our, our mechanics, maybe one or two offices is our contemplation. And again, that's why we have the restrooms here, then one restroom here. Massachusetts State Plumbing Code requires us to have a bathroom within 300 feet. I'd prefer actually not to have it out there. But, and then just have everything else down this area.
Okay.
And then the, so the septic system and the occupancy count, again, you know, say landscapers or, you know, other smaller type businesses, you could have many more employees, you know, coming in and out of that property. This was what we were basically proposing here in terms of counts and stuff like that. You know, the original plan was contemplating 100, 120 employees with those 17 days. We're saying 25 to 30 and that's probably generous. And most of those would be drivers that would be heading out of, you know, early in the morning and coming back at 3:30 in the afternoon. So on property, you're looking probably at like six to eight employees typically during the day. So not a heavy, you know, employee use. The number of doers will increase, but again, we're just trying to garage our equipment inside, take care of it, prevent any kind of theft, vandalism, things like that. So. The paving does increase and it's in all the calculations. The drainage calculations have been prepared by our civil engineers. But everything is, we worked within the Conservation Commission's limit of work. So we didn't look to extend, go beyond. That's why there was a comment about the Conservation Commission saying, you know, there's some, some review that needs to be done. We've, you know, again, we've taken the steps to have the, the two inspections that were needed. We've hired our consultant to go out and do all the turtle inspections. And then I've actually included their names in the, in the letters of response and the report as well that we had performed. If we're not done by next spring, the turtle consultant would be engaged again to come out. He's going to be coming out on an annual basis. And then we'd also be scheduling with Natural Heritage, the Wetlands Trust test over there. She was great. She walked the entire perimeter and we had no issues whatsoever.
Now, have you filed with Conservation yet?
So we have. There's an existing order of conditions. And this is what I guess we wanted, to come in and again, work within that existing order of conditions.
Well, I think because it has changed, it sounds like they will want to, want you to file so that they can put them in your name as opposed to the prior owners.
Right.
So that that's done properly. So go ahead.
So, so again, we'll, we'll contact, you know, Conservation probably beginning of the week after that. So again, you know, we're, you know, the conserv-- there's a conservation restriction on the property beyond the limits of work. There's no change to that. We're not asking for any other changes. You know, again, the endangered species, all the inspections are up to date. So, you know, car parking, again, was 75. We're down to really 30. So I guess everything we try to do is really try to take a proactive approach to, you know, see what the impact was. And we felt that the impact on the previously approved plan was much more significant than what we were, what we were really trying to do there.
Since you have lowboys, assume, yeah, the drainage radius is sufficient for the--
Yes, sir. That's why we did the, the yellow configuration because we figured the fire department would have questions as well. But our longest trucks and stuff like that all, all can make the turn. And that's why we have the design and locate the buildings where they are.
Thank you.
Is the, yeah, the solar, it says opportunity, is that going to be, I guess, building mounted, ceiling, like roof?
Potential.
Rooftop? Nothing, nothing on the--
We weren't looking at a ground mount, no.
No, then you'd be, yeah, you'd have to make those provisions in that.
Right. So we were just looking potentially, maybe it's--
Yeah, that's fine, it's funny, yeah.
We currently have solar on our building. We have TMLP in Rainham. And so we actually don't have a electric bill at two of my buildings. So, you know, it's been--
That's nice.
Yeah, it's been great. It's been great, you know. So that's why we wanted to just, you know, make sure we're, you know, telling you everything that's, we've been thinking about. But we're definitely, we're looking at a lot of different renewable projects outside, on construction projects as well.
Right. And then, so the buildings where you're housing all your trucks, you said you may be doing maintenance on them?
Yes.
So would you guys, I don't know, it would be part of your site plan, but you'd, you'd have to and then have, I'm assuming, like, separators and everything like that? Oil-water separators?
Oil-water separator.
Right, and that'd be part of your site plan, or is it?
Yes.
Part of the, okay. Yeah, and I just, when you said that, that was required, yeah?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Any other planning board members have any questions for this time?
Yeah, so the footprint hasn't changed, I guess, as far as like the conservation, like you said, the footprint of your disturbed. I know the, the pavement is extended, so extended. So where is the pavement extended, I guess?
It does look a lot different.
It does. I mean, there's a plan within the, within the, it's the C1.0 plan. It's actually with a red line. I don't know if it printed out in color, but that, this plan actually shows the limit of work. And that, and so it shows that there's no deviation on the limit of work. If anything, we actually pulled back--
Right, but you might just make it more impervious than the other one because of less, is it less, is it less building square footage or is this not?
It's, it's actually, the building square footage is slightly different, but very, very slight. It was just under about 400 square feet less building.
Right, okay.
But it just ended up being with the, the configuration. We just couldn't fit the trucks--
No, no, that's fine. The, the extra 50,000 square foot of paving is-- So you're just making it a little wider, but it falls within the confines, I guess, of what the conservation, what was previously--
Yes, and that's why all the drainage calculations and everything. I think we were like 24% now, with everything was like the 30. So it was slight, but again, this is the field here. But all the drainage calculations, all the, all the basins are sized. They were actually a little bit smaller because just with the, where the locations were. There were a bunch of smaller basins. So again, we, we went through everything, all the, I think the drainage report's 150 pages.
Yeah.
It's--
Right, yeah.
Some light reading, you know?
Yeah.
So, but--
Okay. Did anyone have any questions they want to come up and ask? Comments, questions? Come on up. And if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Wayne Cardo's at 43 Cross Street, Lakeville. We are direct visitors. This is literally in our backyard. And we're just here tonight to get some information and see what it's going to look like and what the plans are. As far as the, I know there's been a lot of work done back there. Is, do you plan on taking any more trees down? Is that the footprint you've got now, is that going to be it?
The limits of work is, is what's there.
That's what's there. It's not going to go any further?
No. We, we have everything marked out, everything staked, everything's been inspected. Again, the wetlands folks, turtle people, everybody's blocked the entire perimeter. Took them a couple hours, so it's a big, it's a big burn.
And I'm sorry, sorry if you could just direct comments through me, but you can ask.
Yes, the, I know the turtle thing, it's right behind our shed in our yard. We can see the gravel back there for the turtles. As far as, once the buildings are done, would any kind of a burn be put up? Like for fir trees or something, evergreens, something like that to cut down on the noise?
Plan in here? Do you have a landscape or planting plan?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So--
I believe we were just working off the, the previous one. So there was no burns and things like that. There would be--
It is part of site plan review to have the landscape as well as the design, architectural. So we would like to see that.
Yeah.
Especially, so, you know, if-- Now, I know there is a Lot 2 that is shown on the locust map. Do you also own Lot 2?
Lot 2, I think is the, I think that's the residential piece.
That's the built front?
So those are the ones, so that's why this, this is confusing to--
Yeah, because there's a residential line.
Yeah, we, we have nothing to do with the residential. That was already built by the previous owner, Paul Plucci. And then he sold, he sold the residences, I believe is my understanding. But this was, and there was a separate order of conditions for that.
So then this gentleman's house, I'm just trying to figure out which one he's at because we haven't had-- I believe Lot 2 is what shows the business slash residential zoning line.
I think, yeah.
So--
I think Cross Streets, where your, where your lot is. Down here, down here.
Is it to the south?
That's right.
Southeast, east and south.
So the septic system will be mounted. So that would be theoretically a burn. So there would be, so there wouldn't be any plantings on the, on the septic system, obviously. But that's where the septic system was planned originally and--
But you could put plantings. You own that, right?
No, it's pushed, the septic system is right to the edge of the limits of work. So you'd be into modifying that. But that's where the existing septic, or original plan was for the septic system.
So there's no existing septic?
No, it's, I'm sorry, it's a previously approved--
So you still have to go through Board of Health as well? And I know they had questions.
Yeah.
So a lot of times, you know, if Conservation or Board of Health has changes that they request, a lot of times, we want to see that final plan as well. So if you're not through Conservation or Board of Health, we potentially could, you know, do a conditional approval where if there's any changes to the plans, it would have to come back, back to this board as well.
Understood. And again, we only got the comments today. One of the comments from Board of Health was the, was the well. It was onsite, so we basically just did the Home Depot kit to see what it was. We weren't even, we weren't even aware that there was a well. We uncovered it, we found that there's a 90-foot well, six-inch casing there. So we did a quick test on it. Test came back very, very good. So, so we actually hired, or we contacted Hydratech out of Sterling, Mass. To come, to do, perform the inspection and, and all that stuff. Once they have a report, then we can share that with the Board of Health.
Okay.
I think one of the other questions from Board of Health, that was one. Let's see, this is Fire Department. The other question that they, oh, the other question they were just asking was about the bathrooms. So again, it was just, I think, just more of an explanation that we wanted to try to provide. But again, the septic system is, the septic system's been sized for many more employees than, than was originally required. But again, stayed in that same exact location. So we tried to make as few changes from the previously approved plan that we could.
Did you reduce the septic or no? You kept it the same as was before?
We kept it from the previous design, I'm sorry. We, it's been sized. We kept it the same size, but we don't, we don't think we're going to be using it as much. But again, didn't want to really, you know, we felt it also would give some, you know, more buffer, be an elevated and stuff like that too, so. I think those are the, those are the Board of Health comments, the well and the, and the reason why we only have the two bathrooms.
So are you going to use, are you going to use the existing well onsite? Or are you thinking of connecting to the town water?
So the fire department--
Because the fire department--
Fire Department had a question, so we would actually, we're going to bring in a line for the fire.
Okay.
So that would be located, you know, probably in onsite meetings, what we suggested with the fire department. So Chief, Chief O'Brien had indicated that. And then we would do the inspections and the maintenance. Hydratech actually does our inspections and for our onsite hydrants that we have at our current buildings. And then the well, though, could be potentially used based upon the tests we have. Could be, if it was going to be used for potable water, then it could be used for that.
Does the well located in the middle there, where it's all paved?
Yes, so then we'd have to basically set it, set a--
Okay, yeah, that's, okay.
I could also ask, which building is closest to my property? Is it an office building or garage or?
Garage.
It's a garage?
It's garage.
But so now, so you are sort of down to the right?
I guess, where are you on Cross Street? Because Cross Street comes down in loops, right?
Yeah.
Almost maybe here?
Yeah, we're just before the last curve.
Okay. So, and--
Right here?
Yeah. Your operations are, what, your hours are operations, or what?
Great. Our hours are, you know, guys would get typically like maybe 6:00 in the morning, you know, do their stuff. And then most of the guys are back by 6:00 at night at the latest, you know? That's what our typical stuff is.
Nothing, yeah, nothing second shift or anything like that at all?
We don't. I mean, if somebody, you know, if a piece of equipment or truck needs to be worked on, you potentially could have a mechanic trying to fix it for the next day's work, so.
No, there's no deliveries?
No, we, no, we don't. I mean--
Not deliveries, that you said, but yeah. Okay, I gotta go up for a special, he comes in late because he was waiting for me. Doesn't get in till 9:00 at night.
The only, usually that would be because of traffic, so.
Yeah.
Which is, but no, our typical, our typical days on our sites are, are, you know, 7:00 to 3:30.
Right, whenever you get back, how long it takes? If you're in New Hampshire, 3:00, then yeah.
That's, that's usually, that's a pretty much, that's a haul. We're all the way up in Bedford, New Hampshire right now, doing a project up there. But, and most of our deliveries and stuff like that are right around the middle of the day. But, so, no, I mean, in terms of office, our office is going to be like 120, 140, 160 square feet, maybe something like that. It'll be two, two counters with a couple of computers. But that's, there's not really much office anticipated there, it's not--
Right, but for the most part, your trucks are leaving early in the morning and coming back early evening and that's it?
Pretty much, yes. And then they, yeah, so.
And they would be leaving from that garage?
Well, you've got multiple--
Yeah, yes, a few.
So the doors are all on this side, doors are here. I mean, this, this, this property is, it's a huge property. So I mean, we're, we're fairly, I mean, these will be the, the, these will be the garage doors that be facing towards maybe the residential. And that's going to be, I mean, I'm going to guess, but that's going to be 600, 700 feet.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, this is a long distance. But--
Okay.
Did you have any more questions?
Yeah, I think I'm all set for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one other thing I was thinking, is there going to be any type of drainage inside of those buildings for like, I don't know, snow that comes off the trucks or anything? Are you thinking about putting drains in any one of the buildings?
We would typically just put them right at the front, right at the front door so that if snow or something like that--
What they call it?
Just a trench drain.
Trench drain, yeah, okay.
And then if that did, then go to oil-water separator.
Yeah, or if you have drains inside for, if you're doing any work on them.
Yep.
If they do work inside, they have to--
Yeah, okay. We don't, we don't want too many drains.
No.
You know, we're just, if there's, if there's, you know, but that's part of why we want to get the trucks inside so we don't have, you know, the snow on, on the top of the truck, you know, flying off and stuff. Keep everything in.
No.
We wash our trucks pretty much every day too, so I mean, we try to take care of them, so.
If I remember, what's the green down at the very bottom?
This, this green here is, is basically, that's what a septic system is. But that's just showing kind of the buffer areas.
And how much, how far would you say it is from the border of that white area to the, down to where this gentleman's property would be?
From here?
Yeah.
Let me just see if I can--
Well, just, just--
We-- I'm going to say a few hundred feet at least.
I think, I believe that's closer to Bella Way, Bella Way than it is to Cross Street. Cross Street's to the right.
Who's it?
I mean, that's, that's probably 400 feet, 300. It's a football field, basically. I mean, you know, this, this whole area, the, the light green area is, you know, that's, you know, to me, it's, it's a pretty great buffering area, you know, from what was originally, you know, doing all that reading and seeing the market basket that was originally approved 15 years ago, whatever, what was going to be potentially on this site. I mean, again, it seems like it went from, almost I'll say it, overbuilt. Wait, you know, they pushed the limits on everything to now something where I think is, you know, for my operation, again, single user.
Yep.
Not, not a heavy employee group, you know? We can control the site, again, that's why we've put this small building here. We'd have a fence gate, have Knox box with the fire department coordinate that with them.
Yep.
So.
So now, what exists there between his property and this? Is it this? Is there any?
Just, just, just the conservation restriction area, yes.
But so no, you're not proposing plantings yet in that area?
No, again, I think with the original plan, didn't contemplate any plantings and stuff like that. The septic system was always located in this area here. Again, it's a raised mound.
So we may be looking for something like that as a, you know, for the landscape so that he's not seeing this, you know?
Again, I think the raised mound here is pretty, pretty high. So I don't know that he's going to see much with, with that. But we could, we could maybe even have our engineer just take a look and maybe do maybe a profile but based upon what I saw there.
I'm sorry, your, your address again?
Is it 44?
Your address again?
43 Cross.
43.
43 Cross.
So he's actually behind the other building, off to the right.
This one here?
He's to the right of that. Again, the bottom part is Bella Way, I think.
You said you were around the curve?
Right, yeah.
But right on the curve, right, matter of fact, there's an emergency entrance that runs right alongside my property for the, the lot in question.
Okay.
Michelle.
And that's down, that's down here.
That's his house. That's the, that's the lot. It's clear already.
I think that's way, that's way down here.
I mean, so that makes it look like there's trees in between.
Yeah, but the trees were taken down, right? Is that what you're saying?
There would be, there, over here, there's trees.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm going to have to drive by it and get a little look at that.
That white area is--
That's just gravel. That's just gravel area.
Because based on that, this is the limit of what they've done already.
Right.
Sorry if I'm clear. I don't think they can clear anymore.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Yeah, and it almost looks like the business zone kind of runs along that street?
Yeah.
And then up? So. Interesting.
Okay. I can ask my civil engineer to get us a distance from the property there.
If you could show it, because it's not shown on the plans so far, right? It looks like it kind of borders your property. Correct?
I, I don't, I don't, I'm, I don't know that I've paid much attention to that, that area there, but--
So that, that would be something to show if you, you know?
No, I'm happy to, I'm happy to get a blow up for you.
If it's on, if it is on, if it falls on your property line, just to see that. As well. But, so as far as peer review? So we have large stormwater. General. Peer review. Send the comments from the chief and the Board of Health along with his response letters.
Yep.
Make sure that those are all--
They're all in the coordinates.
Yep.
Appropriate. Appropriate, um, any other disciplines?
I mean, I, I think the revised plan looks.
And, and actually the lighting too, we do ask for the lighting, especially if there is residential over there, we like to see a lighting plan, um, that shows that you're not gonna have any light spillage into, um, the adjacent properties as well.
I, you know, I don't think we'll have any issues with that.
Right.
I'll load that down for you.
Just, just so that, you know, you don't have like a spotlight.
No, we, we always use, we use cutoffs all the time, so.
Yeah, spotlights on at night for security purposes?
Again, I, I, I think if anything, we would maybe, maybe a motion if anything, um, we would do something, but I don't think we're gonna, we're not planning on having a lot of, we, we plan on, on having a gate across there.
Fence, right.
Light splashy over to this gentleman's property.
No, that's why I said we would use a cut, we always use a cutoff, we never, we never, you know, we always make it so it's a cut, cutoff light, so it would go down. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't get any.
Lakeville has the dark sky by law, so.
I, I, we, we do a lot of car dealerships, so we're always trying, we're very familiar with cutting off the, the, uh, the lights, so.
Okay. So we'll get the call for peer review and push this maybe a month out?
So you want to back up conservation?
Well, he'll have to.
Yeah, it has to go through.
Right.
He'll have to go through conservation and Board of Health, and then, um, but at least if we can get the peer review going, get, if, you know, if comments come back within that month, and then you can have a chance to respond to the comments. So, let's see, what's our?
Eight-eight.
What is it?
Eight-eight or eight-twenty-two.
Okay. So. Do we think eight-eight, does that sound good for you?
Sure.
See that?
So, would somebody like to motion?
Make a, make a motion to send Five Harding Street out for a peer review and continue it for till our eight-eight.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kelly.
See you soon.
Thank you.
All right, um, agenda item number two, public hearing for Pinecrest Village continued previously. Upon the application for approval of a definitive plan submitted by Maroni Building and Contracting, Inc. for a two-lot subdivision off Hickory Lane and Pinecrest Drive, assessors map block, map zero-four-three, block zero-zero-seven, lot zero-zero-one. Uh, we do have a request to continue this until August twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four. So, um, we did get a letter from their coun, uh, their council, and I did ask Kathy to send that off to town council, cause we had previously discussed doing that when they sent in the letter. And if their peer review has the responses to, now, we're waiting for them to respond to the peer review?
Yes.
So if they're planning on coming in on eight-twenty-two, could we get peer review here?
Yep, I already.
Okay, all right, perfect.
And I'm waiting to hear back when they think the plans will be.
Okay, all right. So right now, we can, somebody want a motion to continue?
Make a motion.
Public hearing?
Make a motion to continue Pinecrest.
Pinecrest Village?
Yep.
Pinecrest Village to, uh, eight-twenty-two meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, agenda item number three, Stowe Estates, discussion regarding HOA inspections and the release of lots, possible vote. So we did receive the HOA agreement with some red lines from council, and did you receive that?
I have not.
Oh, you have not? Oh, okay, so we'll have to get that over to him. Um, and then there was also, um, the surety form that town council had provided, so we have that. I think what we're looking for at this point, um, you know, as long as you're agreeable to the HOA revisions, we would be looking for an estimate for, um, completion of the roadway. And then we would have our peer review review that, as long as it checks out, um, we can then have you sign that shirt, the form for the surety. And in the meantime, we could do a release of the two lots and hold that lot until this is, that's completed.
So you're, you'll hold the third lot until I sign the peer review with the estimate?
Um.
Bred upon?
Well, so that's all, that, that still has to be done.
Yep.
The peer review, the, but so, I believe this gentleman here, um, he had said something about, at our last meeting, he wanted to get the lots released.
Yep.
So in order to do that, and I think, I'm not sure who talked to Kathy about wanting to put the cash bond down?
We prefer a, um, a bond.
Okay.
An insurance bond, if that's possible.
Okay.
So I have the quote right here that, um, completes, I can.
Yep. If you wanna hand that over to Kathy, she can distribute it.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. And Kathy, you don't happen to have a copy of the, I do, I do, right back from some. So that's the HOA agreement with some red line from town council. So. All right, so we have the estimated total of the forty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ten cents. So we, we would just have peer review, just check this over, make sure that's, sounds right.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can move forward with the final, you know, you can put that money up and we can get that third lot released, released. But at this point, um, I think we are okay to move forward with the two lots. Considering if that's, you know, this is the amount that is determined to be necessary.
Yeah.
So.
Do you need this approved tonight?
No, no, I mean, obviously, like, cause we're gonna have to have peer review review this, so just, I don't know if you need an electronic copy as well, if you can get that over to him, but, um, yeah, if you, as long as you're agreeable to it, and you can send it back completed, and, um.
So just to confirm, once the peer review looks at this, I would come back again?
So, the peer review just needs to be there when you finish the road? So then once you finish the road, then everything can be released?
What's everything? The third lot? This is where the confusion is.
Well, we would release the lot in place, so you would put in, put down the money in order for the, the release of that lot.
Correct, and then the peer review would see that everything is complete, and then the bond would come back.
Correct.
But do I have to come back again to get the third lot released?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think there's anything else. So I would get two lots released tonight? Those I can, I can sell as soon as the peer review, hopefully within two weeks or less, they've, they've had this for a couple of weeks now to, to go out and get the review.
Okay.
They've also had thirty days to come back and change what the scope of work is on that peer review cost. It started nineteen thousand, and we did everything from electric, water, provided all the letters, so.
Right.
I still don't have a cost of what that peer review.
Uh, we haven't seen that yet, Kathy?
I, I reached out.
Okay.
Again, but I didn't hear back.
All right, yeah, I mean, you know, it's a busy time of year, unfortunately.
So what would the bond cost? Are you looking for the exact dollar?
Nope, so what you gave us, we're just gonna have peer review check that, make sure that checks out, whatever that amount they say is okay, would be what you'd be putting up.
Okay.
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 Yeah, any other questions?
Anything else, Kelly?
Okay.
Hi folks.
You stand up, you stayed here.
I did not.
Yeah, I was thinking about.
Nathan Gagnon, Six Sandra Lane.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Jay Gormley, I live at Three Unicorn Lane here in Lakeville.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, uh, will you be releasing, will you be releasing the two lots for him tonight?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, that's what I was just.
Depending on, yeah, which way you said.
No, that's fine, thank you. That would be greatly appreciated for Nathan.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds good.
So.
So the process is you will all sign this tomorrow, the town clerk will certify, and then I'll let you know when you can pick it up.
Okay.
That sound good?
Yeah. And then, again, once the road, once the, the road is complete, the bond and covenant would be released.
Right, as long as that all checked out.
Okay, yeah, and I think the big confusion was, and I was out of town during the last meeting, was it's very hard to complete a project, and I would have damaged all these roads, you know, that we just spent a lot of money on, and then I would have then give that ownership over to the homeowners and said, it's up to you guys to fix it, cause I'm done.
Right, right.
And that really doesn't.
Yeah.
Make a lot of sense, you know, living here in this town, and planning on doing more work, but that would leave a bad taste in.
For goodwill.
What's that?
That ruins goodwill.
True, true, absolutely, so I have no problem putting the bond, even though the bond was not part of the original covenant, but, you know, at this point, we, we need to get.
Right.
Get this going.
And it did say in the covenant, I know I did see it, that it said, you know, the plan of world support, rules and regulations on page two, you know, it still says, you know, be subdivision control law and rules and regulations governing subdivision of land in Lakeville, so. It, it did say it, but I understand, because we have been without support, unfortunately, so, you know, Kathy's, you know, in there by herself.
No, I understand, and she's been a big help, so we just wanna get the project to the finish line.
All right, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, and do you have to take that vote, make a motion?
Yep, so I'll make a motion to vote to release the two of the three lots for Stowe Estates.
Can you identify them as lot one?
Lots one, lots two, lot, lot one and lot three?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make a motion to release lots one and lots three of Stowe Estates.
Second.
Okay, uh, and we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and so Kathy, you'll get this over to peer review.
Say that again. We drive up to the road?
Has he?
Excuse me.
Any of you ever took a right out there to see the project?
I drive by it, but I haven't driven up the road.
Why not?
Well, you guys had it blocked off for a long, a lot of days, you lost the.
It's open now, you can go down.
I'll take a ride, yeah.
And take a ride down.
You gonna be there? Are you guys gonna be there, one of you? Okay.
It, it would be nice.
I, I would definitely like to take a drive down.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll see ya. Definitely.
It would be nice where you cross Myrick Street, if you could smooth that out a little bit.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, all right.
Okay, so we, so that, that still needs the peer review fees? They need to put the down, deposit down, they need to, we need to just make sure that peer review checks off that amount.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, um, get that surety.
Did you get it?
Deposit, okay. All right. Moving on to agenda item number four, we have reviewed the following zoning board of appeals petition, a Fraser to Summit Street. Um, has everybody had a chance to review this? It looks like they are, I, I thought that we had seen this previously, had we seen this one, Kathy? No? It's a, it says a garage on the existing foundation, maybe it's similar to one we had recently.
Yeah, we, we had one that was recently, just like that, where they were taken down, using this building back something, but it wasn't this.
Okay. So.
Oh, this was back in June.
It is residential, it's one of the ones we typically send a no comment vote over to zoning board, unless anybody has any comments, questions, concerns regarding this.
Nope.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
So what's the motion?
Yeah.
A motion to.
I'm waiting.
Send.
Yeah.
Motion to demo, now.
No comment?
No comment, yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
And I, I guess I'll make a motion to, what, no comment on, on a two Fraser, three Summit?
Two.
Three, two Summit. Two Summit Street?
Yep, two Summit.
Okay, so, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving along, we have agenda item number five, planning board goals, and along with this item, we did have a couple items, uh, from Dan that he had put together. Um, I did try to send out a revised spreadsheet of the goals, adding those in, uh, but it didn't make the packet, so, um, he has written up a proposal for the agricultural district bylaw, as well as a senior overlay. These are two things I myself have looked into in the past, so it's nice, we did have the senior overlay, um, as number sixteen. Um, and then the agricultural bylaw, um, I did add that in at the bottom. And I think, Dan, if you want to discuss these items, since you brought them up.
I just gotta pull it up here. And I have the hard copies in front of me, so.
Oh, did you want?
Um, do you have the hard copies?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, let's go over the first, the first one that was submitted on June twenty-fifth, uh, to the board, was for the proposal for a senior housing overlay district, so, um, there is definitely a need for this, um, type of district, uh, especially with, um, the Lakeville hospital site becoming a, um, you know, part of the property is going to become, uh, senior housing as well, as well as, um, the, I'm trying to think of a technical.
And assisted living or independent?
Assisted living and independent living.
That's right.
Um, yeah.
Memory care.
Memory care, memory care. Um, so, with that being said, I mean, you know, we wanna make sure that those parcels are, um, you know, identified on a map. In addition to that, um, there's also other benefits that this could provide for the town, um, if, you know, we identify other, um, properties that could fall within this type of district as well. You know, as we know, town's expanding, a lot more things are coming about, and, um, this type of district would be beneficial. There were some other things that I had put in here to make sure that there was safety, accessibility provisions that were part of this overlay district, to make sure that, you know, there was handicap accessible, uh, types of accessibility, um, and make sure that pedestrian safety was also part of that as well, um, for seniors, so that would, put together that type of, um, permitting. In addition to that, um, there was some things that I'd like to see included, such as, you know, making sure that, you know, any properties that fall within this district also, you know, are, um, pertain to the look and feel of the community, Lakeville, you know, the small New England town look, beauty and feel, um, to ensure we preserve the characteristics of that. Um, and also zoning, so zoning for fifty-five plus, to make sure that, you know, any residencies that do fall within these districts, uh, you know, that we are providing that the fifty-five plus, um, you know, um, adherences are only within these districts, um, and.
So I'm sorry, so.
Go ahead, yeah.
Now, do you envision this as an overlay over the existing underlaying zones, which would mean you could have, you know, it could be over residential or business?
Yeah, overlay, yeah.
Okay, not its own zone.
Not its own zone, sorry, I should have prefaced that.
I just wanna make sure that, okay.
Yeah, an overlay, um, some towns have created these types of overlays, um, Bill Recker, North Reading, Hadley, um, Andover, so it, it, actually, it's a nice mix, so you've got Western Mass, who's.
Yeah, way out there.
Yeah, way out there, yep, as well as, um, you know, North Shore and so forth, so, um. Yeah, way out there, yeah, as well as, um, you know, North Shore and so forth, so, um.
Okay.
You know, so these overlays are something that we should definitely consider, um, especially with housing, um, here, and, you know, as it's becoming more evolved. So that's, that's the first one, um.
I can, no, so can we just maybe talk about this? Because.
Absolutely.
There's a few things that came to mind.
Go for it.
That I just want to kind of flush out, and maybe I'm way off base or maybe you'll agree or not. But, so we have the OSRD, which, when, when, because we don't have water, we don't have town sewer, we know that there's certain restrictions as far as lot size and, and size of buildings. With the senior component, I know they have a little more flexibility, they don't need as much water, et cetera. Um, and we've talked about adding that senior component to the OSRD as, as maybe not an allowance, but maybe a must. Is this something we do in, like, as part of OSRD or do we do this separately? You know what I'm saying? Because we have so, so much work and time into the OSRD.
Hmm.
Do we?
Yeah.
Add this into it to get it done at the same time? Or do we do this as a separate thing? What's that?
If you do, will it make it too cumbersome to do? I mean, or too.
Well, so, so in my mind, we kind of have to go through all the same steps. We'd have to get review from Board of Health and their, you know, input, everybody will have to give input to this to make sure that the zoning works for the town. And, and an OSRD would be by special permit, it's not by right.
Right, right. I, I think if we combine it though, it could be an issue without, if you're putting the overlay in, if you put it as part of the OSRD and it gets shut down, then, then you have to start over from scratch. Not start over from scratch, we still have to get it.
Yeah.
Put back in. And how much, and how many areas, I guess, are.
Right, because.
Qualifying for that OSRD versus how much you want, you can do the overlay to do a lot more, right? I don't know.
Right.
I, I understand what you're saying, I, I think it could work, but then it could be, it could. It could, something could that we want could get shut down just because of the OSRD, if it's not favorable.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I just figured I'd.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, because we still, the OSRD is still on the table, right, still.
Right.
Right.
But this is also something, if, if we use a consultant, they could help us draft this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and take some of those steps.
Right.
Um.
I think, I think it could be a component of the OSRD.
Yeah.
What does that have to be, I don't know, I, I mean, maybe, I don't know if.
Because that's what we had talked about, we had talked about, should we add a senior component to OSRD?
Once again, if it gets, the whole thing gets shut down, the whole senior thing gets shut down. Then you have to start all over.
So I guess, so I guess my, my other thought is what, with all of these items, are there some that we want to bring and prioritize? So that, just, so let, I'll, I'll let you go on to the, the next item, but just let's think about what, what, what items do we want to get done? Because obviously we're limited to.
Yeah.
What those things are. Um, but.
Is the senior thing something we should more prioritize by virtue of the growing?
I know, I think it has, I think it has, yeah, exactly, I do think it has a lot of support.
Hmm.
It, it definitely would. I, I mean, and the senior overlay, I mean, given the fact that, you know, the hospital project's going to be redeveloped there.
Yeah.
We would definitely probably want to make sure that we start to elevate that, to put that as part of the process.
Mm-hmm.
Um, since this is going to be, that complex is going to have two, two senior components, which is the memory care, that one building, plus the senior.
Assisted living.
Assisted living.
Right.
Right.
Part of the building, yeah.
Then you'll have the fifty-five plus.
Yep.
We have, well, I, I mean, LeBaron's probably not a good recommendation at this point because, you know, they're going to be focusing on the other buildings. But if there were to be another development that does come up where there would be a fifty-five and over component, um, we want to make sure that we lock that in.
Or that they have this as an option instead.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right, instead of just mixed use fifty-five plus.
Right.
Right. So.
Hmm.
That's probably my only thought on that.
Okay. I mean, I, I'm, I'm not again, I'm, I'm definitely for a senior zoning.
We want to keep our seniors here in town.
Yeah, yeah, especially knowing how those taxes are going up, I'm sure they want something smaller that.
Jack, you qualify.
I'm so foggy.
Stay.
Yeah.
I thought you was, you, you were only sixty-two, come on.
Yeah, I can't even see back that far.
Uh, the, so, so there is that component, which we can kind of discuss about the goals. The secondary component is the agricultural district bylaw. So this is not to take the, the place of the right to farm bylaw, which was adopted back in twenty-twenty-one. This is more so to identify, um, the farms that we currently have. And by farms, I don't, you know, it, it's not just the, um, the, the, you know, cows and so forth. You, you have to think of the cranberry bogs that we have here in, you know, in town. We have several, uh, throughout town. We also have, um.
Elliot.
I'm sorry?
Elliot Farm.
Yeah, I mean, Elliot's is a great example in the surrounding areas, um, you've got the Crooked Lane, uh, farms over there. Uh, we also have, um, off of eighteen, there's, um, you know, the, the cornfields are out there. So, I mean, there's a very large district. So the, the, the big thing about this is to, um, look at, um, a new bylaw to be known as the Agricultural District Bylaw. Um, basically it reinforces the right to farm bylaw, which we currently have here in town. Um, but it, you know, it, it encourages current farmers and current landowners to keep it as agricultural. Um, and having benefits. There's, uh, a few things that the state already has, um, available, uh, for farmers here in town or those that have large, open, wide space. Um, it's the APR, also known as the Agricultural Preservation Restriction. And it's, um, intended to offer a non-development alternative to farmers and owners of prime and state important agricultural land who are faced with a decision regarding future use, use of their farms. Uh, the program offers to pay farmland owners the difference between the fair market value of their, um, ownership and the agricultural value of their farms in exchange for a permanent deed restriction, which prevents, uh, use of the property that will negatively impact its future agricultural viability. So it's actually providing them with a benefit, if anything. For example, the kids don't want to take on the farm. You know, it, it deeds it off to the state and then it can be, you know, reused in that sense.
Now, does it, does it say, are there criteria for that?
There is a criteria that has to be made, and, and again, it's up to the property owner as well, but it, it does afford them the opportunity to work with the state and the state will guide them through that process and the legal process of that.
Would that be state-owned then?
Um, that's a good question. I believe it is state-owned, um, but it would become into protection status.
Right, totally, yeah, so when the state would decide, oh, you know, we decided to change this later down the road.
Yeah, it'd be like, um, you know, uh, preservation of land, so if somebody wants to donate the land to the state for, you know, um, whatever, walking trip, conservation, walking trip.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
It'd be similar and to give those people.
It'd be deemed as only, it could only be come back as agricultural, what is.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so.
So they can't, once you deed it over to the state, the state can't turn around and put, uh, solar panels there or.
No, no, no.
Yeah, still have, we have to have an elk, agricultural use.
Mm-hmm. Right, right. Um, and, uh.
Although, you know, I will say this one from Blanchard, it actually says the, one of the allowed uses is a roof-mounted and ground-mounted.
Yeah.
Solar.
So that, that's the other.
Sorry about that.
Blandford, which I've never heard of this town.
Yeah.
It's going to be Western Mass.
Yeah.
Um, the, so they set up an agricultural bylaw as well in town. So they, you know, pers, they would be permitting certain lands of open space to use for, um, solar farms in different purposes as well. So for example, a great example of this would be, um, on Crooked Lane, the Orawalls, where they had put in the solar farm over there. You know, that could also be part of this, um, operation, if you will. I mean, again, this is all fluid, this is just benchmarking, um, of what other towns are doing. However, there is a need, I would say, to identify on our zoning map, um, which areas are designated as agricultural.
Yeah, yeah.
Or which, which ones are willing.
Or willing.
To, to, that want to change the zoning too. But I guess what you've, the research you've done is, is letting them know that this would be your option. So that would be some, that would be.
Yeah, yeah.
A, a tool to maybe see if they're interested in that.
Yeah. And again, land preserve, preservation that is pretty much, you know, open space but untouched, if we're able to do something or have some sort of, um, bylaw that would, uh, support the, um, right to farm, uh, bylaw in conjunction, um, would be great. Uh, the towns that were, um, benchmarked was Blandford, Mass.
Mm-hmm.
Sterling, Mass, which I believe is in Worcester County, and Concord, which is, you know, right, right there, um.
Beautiful town.
Yeah, beautiful town, um, outside of Boston. So, you know, try to get a, you know, I, I'm sure if we reached out to those folks, um, we could get some, uh, buy-in. And we also have the Agricultural Committee here in Lakeville as well, which we want them to be fully a part of as well.
Sure.
Do we want to reach out to them?
I, I, I think we should. I, I don't know how often they meet, but, um, Dave and his team, you know, the team there, um, I think it would be good to kind of reinforce that and see if they would be, um, want to either have a joint meeting about it or.
Yeah, if they want to join us and talk about it, see if it's something they want to help us investigate.
Yep. Yeah.
Especially if they have ties to certain farmers.
Yeah. So.
So.
Couldn't hurt, but. Yeah.
I, I like this too, Dan.
It's a little one, it's pretty, yeah.
I think, I think we have a lot to go with this because there are, it, these are very different, you know, from each other when you look at them.
Yeah.
And even the one that I had, you know, running that too, that I had previously looked at.
And I don't believe this would be an overlay. This would be more so of its own.
Right.
No, this would be its own, yeah.
Like, and change for certain part, like, but it can't be spot zoning. It has to be large enough areas that acres.
But I think we have enough, like you said, in that eighteen, Crooked Lane, that's all in one big area.
Yeah, so, e- exactly. So you've got the cornfields at about, um, eighteen, I was, as, you know, you drive to town, you know, not only is it Crooked Lane, but then you also, if you go up the other side of eighteen, going up towards Free Town and so forth, you got, um, I believe there's some cranberry bogs up there. There's some cranberry bogs, uh, on, uh, on Highland.
Highland, yeah, they're redoing those.
Yeah, I noticed that, um, which is great, yeah, so, um.
Right.
It's more down on, um, South, South Precinct?
Yes.
Yes.
In the back there.
Yep, South Precinct.
Bana County, there's a couple.
Some across the street from a house, but that's mostly Berkeley too.
Yeah.
It's Lakeville and Berkeley.
Yeah.
On Pierce Ave.
Right.
Yeah, so there are, I mean, there, there are.
There's a lot of farms, we've got horse farms, we've got, yeah, so.
If they're interested, you know, it can't, it can't hurt to at least maybe reach out to them first, see who's interested and then kind of look to create the zoning language around what they.
Some public support.
Yeah, or feel interested in, I guess.
Blandford, west of Springfield, past Westfield.
Okay.
Out there.
What's the population?
Uh, around.
Thirty.
Twelve.
Three. Where do they go to the grocery store?
Three.
Twelve hundred and fifteen.
One?
Really?
It's a twenty-twenty.
Twelve hundred.
I just wondered a few months ago, there was a Florida, Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Florida, Massachusetts, it was like, oh, okay, but it's beautiful out there.
It is, yes, they have trees still.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're like one town away from Connecticut, they're the south, like a western.
So they're southwest, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I guess, because this kind of dovetails towards the, uh, the plan, planning board goals. I mean, we've got these two proposals. We'll have to figure out like where they go, but I guess what are, what would be like the next steps we would want to do and prioritize?
Well, I think for agricultural, it would be reach out to the Agricultural Commission, see what they think of it, if it's something they want to get involved in, if they are interested in helping us garner support or interest in creating such a, um, zone.
All right.
And then for the senior housing overlay, like I said, I would like, if, if we can get approval to use this consultant firm, to use the planning board, you know.
Yeah, uh.
Budget towards a consultant.
Mm-hmm.
This could be something we could task them, we could get an estimate, how much is it going to cost? Let, let, and, and honestly, we could actually go to Serpent, see if it's something they're able to assist with. And if we can have them use ours instead, and then they'd also be able to check for grants and say, well, there's a grant available or there isn't, or they can say it's not in our real house and then we could.
Right, go to a consultant.
So I guess the first step would be reach out to Serpent. Um, what do we have, so the hours start again in Ju.
Right.
Right now, July.
Yep.
So, um, we should have all the hours. I know, so we had already reached out to Serpent for the stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
Um, bylaw.
Bylaw.
So I have to figure out if they're gonna, if they're planning on using ours towards that. So that might have used them. Um, and then.
Will Ashford go here?
No, for, that's for this, because, yeah. Because they said that they would be working on it, and I can just ask her for an update on that because I haven't heard anything in a while. Um, and then, so figure out, you know, do we have any hours? Or is it going to just all be dedicated to that stormwater? Because that's very important to get done. Um, and then, um, go from there. See if we can potentially try the consultant for a senior overlay.
Sounds good.
Because, so now if we look down at these goals, we have the Housing Production Plan. So that, you know, that's approved. Kathy, I didn't see it on the website yet though. Yeah, um, I went to that link, but it's changed, so I have to reach out to Serpent again. Okay. I don't know what happened to that.
Excuse me.
Goals, goals, electronic agendas, buildable land, um, yeah, that was something Serpent can't help us with. Um, so that's something the town would have to do internally, review current zoning map. We're, we're working through that as well. Um, review of forty-B, forty-R, three-A for identification of applicable property. We are considering extending to the, um, portion of the hospital site where they're proposing a forty-B to use forty-R instead, which would have a financial benefit to the town as opposed to forty-B that doesn't. Um, that's still in works.
Great.
Got the review planning board rules and regs. So we have, oh, Kathy, um, so we have a public hearing date for the rules and regs, correct?
Yeah, I have that on my desk.
Okay, I know, and I don't remember it off the top of my head. But I, I had talked to Nate today and I had just said, oh, do you know if town council had a chance to review the rules and regs? And he's, he doesn't think that we need to have them review the whole thing. And I'm like, oh, you're right, why would we have her review all of it?
Yep.
We just need the forms, so if we can just.
Yeah, I started looking through the forms and I I just real real quick, but I know some of them aren't gonna work, so I'm just gonna.
Okay.
Yeah, so hopefully next week, like I'm slowly starting to dig out of.
But can't town council just do them? Cause I know she sent one for the charity, which is one one that was in that packet.
Yes, like some of them are good, but some of them, like I said, I just need to kinda focus on that. I've been trying to catch up from having to, having to take time off.
Right, right.
So.
But so has town council been sent them yet?
The forms?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of. I thought Nate was doing that.
I thought that I had sent them to.
Yeah, I. I don't have that, so.
So we'll just have to touch base with town council, make sure that, we just need the forms, not the whole rules and regs, because we're gonna do. The minor revisions, the fee schedule and the forms, so as long as they can review, they've already reviewed the fees. Cause that was approved years ago, and then um. The forms, and then we have the full undertaking, that there's a a grant application open for. The other part is if Christina's going out on maternity leave, who's gonna be checking status of the grants? Who will be getting that status? Do we know? So that's something, I guess, to find out.
Is she going out?
I think it's Friday.
Oh, okay.
Is it tomorrow?
It was today.
Jeez.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, so hopefully somebody has that login information. I know she had to kinda search for the login information when she was filing it. Okay, well, we'll have to look into that. Um, yeah, review, so that's the rules and regs, so we're looking for a minor revision with the public hearing this summer. And then if we get the grant funding, major overhaul of the whole thing. When that, if that happens. We have a combined CPA and Concom meetings, we have that for December, which is good. Do that when it's not as busy, we have a lot going on right now.
Yep.
Um, implementation of applicable master plan goals, um, that's a December thing. Adopt stormwater management by law, this is the thing I'm gonna check with Serpent on, um. Just see where they're at right now. Cause I know we had sent them a draft, that we had a a rough draft. Um, update priority protection and priority development areas, that Serpent is also. Still underway with, I did hear from them recently, um, that's, they're still working on finalizing that. Uh, review use chart and zoning bylaws, that's still something I would like to get to. Uh, remove and redo mixed use, well, the remove failed, so, so apparently people are satisfied with it. Um, so I don't feel as though that's a priority at this point.
Nope.
Uh, the zoning change request process, that's something that I had said after town meeting, I'm gonna reach back out to the SLAC board. So, um, did I discuss that with you, David and Dan, since you've been on? Are you familiar with what that is? If not, just real quickly, it's, um, so we'd had a resident who wanted to do a zoning change. Um, he had to go through a petition in order to bring it to town meeting, didn't, so when it's a citizen petition, you don't get town council review. And if it were to pass, then in the town, you know, if there's legal issues with it, that's kind of a. Like, not a good thing. So if we actually come up with a process, even if it's something that the planning board says, no, we don't support this, and we don't give a. Positive, um, you know. A opinion towards town, town meeting, um, if we have a process at least. They can come in, introduce it, and we can, we can have like a. An actual process on how that can happen, other than just citizen petition.
Right.
Um, and I had done, I had come up with a FAC. That I I had used some other towns, some examples from, and then there was a form as well. So I can certainly lead that to you as well, and I'll just reach back out to the SLAC board and say, you know, can we get this on the radar? Or or, you know, maybe they don't support it, so we'll see. But at least I can just email them and I'll email um send around. Create senior housing overlay, we just discussed that, I feel like this should be moved up.
Yep.
And then the agricultural, um, I feel like leave it at the back for now and we'll see how much support.
We're gonna need to get some buy in, I'm sure, on that, see what their thoughts are, Dave and.
And I did reach out to him, Dave Thomas.
Dave Thomas, yeah.
Like the the guy from Wendy's.
Yeah, yeah.
I reached out to him during this, you know, CPA um campaign, and he was responsive, I think I messaged him on Messenger.
Oh, okay.
Maybe.
Dave Thomas. I was like, wow.
Send him your email that way.
That needs to sound really familiar, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'll I'll report back if I, you know, depending on what their thoughts are.
Okay.
We can, but yeah, I.
I mean, it's not that we we don't have to move forward, really.
No, 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 but I I definitely agree that the senior overlay, given what's going on with um the hospital project.
So where do you wanna move this?
Well, I mean, in in terms of.
Should we maybe move it to five? Cause I feel like we have a few in front here that.
Underneath the.
Are kind of like ongoing, well, and I think I've.
Zoning chart? Or?
Um, well, cause this established traffic tracking map of buildable land area, I feel like that even could move down because. And actually, maybe, I don't know if we wanna do it right now, to address these dates, maybe next time I'll, we'll send out a.
Yep.
A clean copy, but we'll do it so it makes the packet, so everybody has it, and then we'll kind of visit the dates and the timelines for all of these.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, so we'll put that on for the next.
Next meeting?
Uh, well, August, we'll do it for the first meeting in August, right?
So that's the eighth.
Eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah, eighth.
Eight eight.
Eight eight, yeah.
Does that work, or do we have too much?
No, I I.
We usually forego August.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we usually forego one of the.
Yeah.
No? What? Is anybody out, nobody's out of town, though?
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll just put it on for the first eight eight.
Yeah.
And we look at these.
Usually forego the second one.
Take a break.
Well, I think, do we already have some things for the August?
It's fine.
Twenty second? We do, right?
Twenty second.
Yeah, we just, we just, we just continue.
Twenty second will be Pinecrest, but I'm, it that depends on, that 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 depends on, you know.
Yeah, Playboy means twenty five.
Yeah.
Oh, is that, yeah. Is it twenty five?
Yep.
Oh, okay, I thought it was twenty second. Alright, well.
So we got that.
Anybody have anything to add for the goals, questions, comments, concerns?
I think it's looking good.
Okay, so we'll add those items, I know Dan, you'd sent me some revisions, so I'll work with that one. And then we can, I'll just move that agricultural one up a little.
Okay.
And we can highlight the time bound and go through it and give ourselves some new.
Sounds good.
Goals, prioritizing the ones that we think are. Hold on, pardon, okay. So now, we have a set of minutes, May ninth of twenty twenty four. Cause everyone had a chance to review these. Any edits?
Nope.
Nope.
No.
They looked good to me as well.
Make a motion to approve the Thursday, May ninth, twenty twenty four, meeting minutes.
Second, pardon.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, our next meeting will be July twenty fifth at the Lakeville Police Station. Um, any other business? I did, just just reading through the minutes, it just gave me a couple questions, Kathy. I know I already asked you about the eight, the housing production plan, what um, what about the letters to the Justine's Way? Residents.
So I thought Nate was gonna take care of that, and I actually, I've, as I've been cleaning up, that was one of my notes, so I was gonna check with him to see if he had done that.
Okay.
So if not, I had some of the information that you had wanted included.
Oh, okay, oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, cause that really should get done, if, I mean, if I have to do it, I'll do it myself too, you know, like.
Well, let you know, I'll update you next week then.
Okay, um, we talked about in the minutes, the Amicus brief from Metabar regarding the three A.
Yeah, I.
Did we ever get anything?
No, I checked with Chacey again, and she'll let me know if something comes in.
Okay. Oh, the Bella Way, so we had gotten an email from Inabutter to Bella Way, he's had some ongoing issues. We're kind of just trying to look into what his comments and concerns are, there's a lot to it, I guess, that was back. That was one of my very first meetings.
That's lot two.
Right, right, exactly, exactly, yeah.
He he recalled that, couldn't he?
Yeah.
That was, that's what I was like.
Remind me where Bella Way is.
So it's a subdivision.
Off Cross Street.
Off of Cross.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
The the gentleman that was in here, they're the other corner of Bella Way.
Okay.
Now the person who has concerns is thirty seven, that's why I looked at thirty seven, so they're they're lot two of Five Harding Street.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I was like, why is lot two on here?
Yeah.
They are only.
So, yeah, well, you say, they have, it's the original locust plan, what he tried to use, so, yeah, that's, so that's the. The se- it's the bottom half of this, of.
Okay.
This is the other half that he that he's not using.
So there's Inabutter, who's had some ongoing issues, I guess he was dealing with Breznik, he was dealing with the prior chair. Um, just trying to figure out where those things landed, cause we were doing, we're, we're doing Zoom over COVID. That was one of my first meetings, it's going, we're going back, so um, there was a covenant, there was a decision. But I don't know, like, is is the decision, like, um, was it filed? I think that was a question that needed.
Yeah, so I think, I didn't have a chance to pull the folder, I did check with the treasurer, there is still money being.
There is a bond, okay.
Um, I didn't have time to look through the folder yet, though, but at that time, so it was a decision, but it wasn't required that it be recorded.
Okay, but was it signed?
So that I don't know.
Okay, so, we just need to know if it was signed then, okay, but if it was signed, that's good, that gives us something, because he was saying that. He was told there's supposed to be a tree buffer and that hadn't been done, so. I did let him know that we, we would look into it and put him on the agenda to try to address his concerns, so. If you get that answer, I don't know if if you wanna reach out to him and just let him, see what date works for him.
Okay.
Maybe try to put him on one that's not a forty three main. So, um. And, oh, and then the other thing, um, Dan and I did get that, um. Revised coordinator slash Concom agent slash consultant over to the SLAC board. And so the only other piece of that would be to revise that budget, like revisit, you know, what do we see now that we have? The numbers for how much they're charging, you know, what their expected costs are.
Yep.
Um, and and what we're looking for in a position, we'd have to revisit that, so I'd like to get that on our next agenda. Yeah, so if we could put for.
Eight eight.
Is, well, what about the next July one, should we push it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, there's no more, there's no more, no, we can push it next.
So July.
What do we have, what do we have next? Is there anything?
Twenty fifth? That's the big one, that's the, that's the forty three main, which, I mean, that should be a quick discussion, right? Right, fairly quick, uh, we've had a chance to review the costs, and so we can do some calculations personally and see what we, you know, if we're close. So July twenty fifth, just add on there, um, discussion regarding planning board budget? Okay, impossible vote.
You wanna dis- discuss a little bit about this? The, um, the, um, the proposal?
Oh, um, well, everybody saw it.
Yeah.
I just copied it, but so.
Yeah, so there was just a slight revision to this, um, the, um. Sorry, I'm just reading this very quickly, uh, so the the change was, I mean, we we're definitely. Considering the consultancy services, the outside one, I mean, that's a hu- huge thing that we definitely wanna have, but the. Secondary one would be a um position, a newly created position, that would um be of. Land use coordinator and conservation agent, so the the, just a little background on this.
We already did, so it's not on our agenda tonight, so I don't wanna get.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because we did discuss it last meeting, and that's why we did the letter, because we had discussed it.
That's fine.
But so, we'll do it, we'll put it on our next meeting, we'll discuss the.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, um, costs associated with those.
Yeah.
Anybody else with any other business that you wanna have on a future agenda or anything?
Just a, I got a couple of old issues.
What's that?
I have a couple of old issues I bring up there. The, remember we had a gentleman that came in here and regaled us with all the water in his yard and the water in his driveway? Because of the contracting and the way the roads were, whatever happened to that?
Was that the Justine's Way letter?
I I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that we were talking, I was just asking Kathy, did we get those letters sent out?
Because I mean, it was, that's bad.
Yeah.
I mean, I hope we could do something for that guy.
Right, right.
We get somebody to do something.
Right.
Of course you're on the storage unit over here, the new storage unit over here.
What about it? I mean, that's built.
I know, did we approve that exterior design and all that?
Oh, that was prior to um architectural um design portion of site plan review, yeah, yep, it was.
The uh buildings, boy, they're not wasting any time next door between that and the CBS putting up those. Those age restricted buildings there. With the second bill on them.
Yeah.
Alright, everybody good?
Without elevator.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
I went over there and walked.
Did you have anything? I'm sorry.
I know you just wanted to jo- to attend, do you have any questions, comments, concerns? You don't have to, unless you want to, well, and and come up and if you could, you wanna speak your, state your name for the record.
Thank you.
Hi, um, Ian Ronzke, I'm at thirteen Bernard's Way in Lakeville. Um, I'm only been living in Lakeville now for about four and a half years, so I I haven't been in the town too long. Um, but, um, I think, I think my biggest concern, I think right now is. Um, finding out about one oh nine Bedford Street.
One oh nine Bedford.
Bedford Street.
Oh, that's, um.
Oh, are you talking about the forty?
Bobs.
B, the, oh, the one that's been clear cut, so that, so because it's a forty B, the only thing we did was send comments to zoning board. Zoning board handles the forty B, so, so really, we only do subdivisions with this multiple. Multiple house lots. Or commercial site plan review. Zoning board does more of the residential, and any anytime there's a forty B, it goes through them, they do the comprehensive permit. Because that comprehensive permit, they get all, a whole list of waivers that seem rolls of bylaws, and that's why they're able to put in multiple units. In, I think it's like a three acre lot or some.
There's either two or three forty Bs, I think, going there, so.
So, yeah, so, so the whole thing is one forty B project, but I think what you mean is. Subsidized housing units that count as affordable units.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kathy, do you recall how many units are going in, is it twelve? I know it changed a couple times, it was like eighteen, sixteen, twelve.
Then it was twelve.
Is it?
If I, not exactly sure, it might have been twelve.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but I thought it changed. Yeah, it has to be twenty five percent.
So I think it was two or three, I think it was going back and forth.
Yeah, that sounds about right, three, it's, alright, it sounds like it should have been three.
Three.
Yeah, it would, it would have to be a minimum, twenty five percent, so.
Yep, thank you. And they do have town water, so they didn't need subdeck, I mean, so they didn't need wells, but they had to do. Oh, God, I don't remember, it was individual subdeck, so not, I think they did, yeah, individual.
Okay, and that's still go, like everything is.
So that's already gone through zoning board there, right, they're, they're all set, yeah.
Okay.
But, like I said, we didn't handle that directly, so, yeah, thanks for attending.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very, thank you. And with that, if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, I can.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.